Okay, it's nine o'clock. A meeting is called to order. Would you all please rise for the invocation? Judge Walton, would you please deliver the invocation?
Yes. Show them in prayer, please, Lord. We just thank you for this lovely day and for all the many blessings that you bestow upon us so generously. We just praise you and give you alone the glory because you alone are worthy. And we just thank you for the privilege that we have as Americans to come together and participate in our government. We praise you for that. We pray for our nation. We pray for its leaders. We're in big trouble, Lord, and just help us out. Send us leaders of conscience and commitment and dedication who seek your wisdom. Lord, forgive us of our sins, and we just give you all the praise and glory for all that you've done, especially for your son, Jesus. In his name, amen.
Amen.
Y'all join me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me to pledge to Texas. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Bob, we have special presentations this morning.
Judge, Commissioners, we're here to celebrate anniversaries for two employees. The first is Andrew Haneker, who's been with the Sheriff's Department for five years.
Judge, Commissioners, Andy started out in the jail and worked his way up, and now he's a sergeant on patrol, so I'm very proud of him.
Very good.
Thank you, sir. The next person that works for Judge Walton, it's Penny Weisen, and she is celebrating 15 years of service.
It's not 80.
Judge and Commissioners, it's a real privilege for me to have the opportunity to present this pen to Penny. No pun intended. She has been with the District Court for about 12, 13 years, a total of 15 years of service in the county. And she is what makes the District Court run and makes people like me. So she does a great job for the citizens of this community, Penny. It's my pleasure to present this to you.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Can I get some more pictures again, please, so you can...
No. Sorry. Thank you, Judge.
Rob, would you please come forward?
I know you guys are busy, and I want to thank you for giving me just a moment to recognize Patrick Berry. Patrick has worked in the DA's office for five years, and in those five years, he's tried over 150 jury trials and has sat with me. We've tried about, I think, nine murder cases together in the last five years. In every one of those cases, the defendants were convicted, sentenced to life or the practical equivalent. While he worked in the DA's office, he studied for and challenged the board certification test for criminal law and is now board certified in criminal law by the Texas Board of Legal Specialization. And I think, as everyone knows, he is now working in the Weis County DA's office, I think it's Weis and Jack County. And I hate to see him go, but I'm happy for him and his family, and I know he'll do good work there in Weis County. And I want to present this plaque to you, Patrick.
Sorry to see you go, Patrick. All right, the next... Does any citizen wish to make any comments about anything that's on the agenda? If so, the sheriff has forms for you. If you'd just raise your hand, any citizen wish to make any comments about any agenda item? Hearing none, the next item is the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Judge. I'd like to pull A1 off. Mary Burnett will explain that.
That particular set of minutes, I had not gotten. I had not been situated, so I felt we should wait and see it all. I had made a couple of...
Okay.
I'd made a couple of changes on it. So I'd like to create our minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. We've pulled off A1 because the court hadn't had a chance to review those minutes, and we'll put them on next week's, our next agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything else off? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to approve everything except A1 on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tout. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The minutes, subdivision, road and plats.
Morning, Judge Cochran. Commissioners, on the first agenda item, I'd like to hold a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the replat of lots 266R, 268R in Block 1 in Bentwater, Lake Granbury, in Section 2. This replat involves a lot line adjustment between lots 267 and 266, resulting in increasing lot 266 by approximately 3,700 square feet, creating 1 and 1/15,000ths of an acre called Lot 266R. And then combining the lots 267 and 268, creating a 3 and 1/4 acre lot called 268R. This replat is located within the water quality in Precinct 4. Staff has reviewed this replat and recommends approval as presented.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider and take, consider the replats of 266R, 268R, Block 1, Bentwater, on Lake Granbury, Section 2. Does anybody wish to make any comments at this time while our public hearing is open? Anyone? Okay, hearing none, a public hearing is now closed, and I'll accept a motion to approve the replat.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Judge, the next one is also a public hearing. It's to consider and take appropriate action on the replats of Lots 72R1 and 74R in Blue Branch Ranch. This proposal is transferring approximately 84 hundredths of an acre from Lot 72R to Lot 74, creating a 3 and 35 thousandths of an acre lot called 74R. And the remaining of the three acre, 674 thousandths of an acres, creating Lot 72R1. The property is located within the Road Quarter District of Precinct 1. Staff also reviewed this replat and recommends approval as presented.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider the replats of 72R1 and 74R in the Blue Branch Ranch addition. Anyone wish to make any comments about this replat? Well, hearing none, a public hearing is now closed. I'll accept a motion to approve this replat.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Judge, the last one we have is consider and take appropriate action on a final plat of Lot 2, Block 1, in the Cedar Canyon Estates. It's located at 6,400 Windy Ridge Court. What this amounts to is it's a, what we have is a 45 and 1/2 acre tract that was recorded by Meats &amp; Bounds. The owner is plating seven, just a little over seven acres in the water quality district. It's in the water quality district of Fall Creek. It's located in Precinct 3. Staff has reviewed this final plat. It does follow all of our regulations as far as the plating requirements, and makes a recommendation to approve as presented.
Okay, I entertain a motion to accept this replat on Lot 2, Block 1, Cedar Canyon Estates, at 6,400 Windy Ridge Court in Granbury, Texas.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout, seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much, Don. Budget and finance, consider budget line item amendments?
Judge and Commissioners, I have no budget amendments today.
Yay. All right, next item is consider payment of bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the total of these bills come to $298,042.81. Those are listed on your schedule of the county table, the register. We had to get these done earlier than normal, and so there are a couple of adjustments. One is a payment to JP Morgan Chase Bank for $374.47. That should not be on there. We have received a credit toward that account, and so there's no need to pay it. It's been credited. Constable Lee brought us that credit, so I'll be pulling that off, and we'll void that particular item. And then after we had entered this for your consideration to Tyler Technologies, $54,000...
Tona's here.
The district clerk, oh, good. The district clerk questioned why it should be $54,000, because she had the understanding the contract price was just over $43,000. I have not received clarification or an explanation of that. If the district clerk wants to address the court, if she's received an explanation, that'll be fine.
I didn't hear, I just sent an email from my wife yesterday after I turned out the divorce number. I had long time back. I'm not even able to tell you the pressure on the house. You could email back that fucking divorce number. You know, I'm happy. My contract says 43, too, and all that. I'm gonna get a sign with the dental company. I'll check this, and I'm gonna...
So you're just gonna hold that check or hold that at POs with your voucher?
Yes, sir. I think we need to remove it and not pay it unless and until those questions are answered.
Good, thank you, Tona. Is there any other things you need to go over on the bills, Stanley?
No, sir. The only other thing relates to the proposed bond issue, the payment to the Attorney General of $3,500. And we'll have Jim Sabonis and Dan Culver here to address those questions.
I'll make a motion we ratify paying the bills for the period listed, Judge.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
With the exception of the one that he asked the treasurer to pull that check and then what the district clerk talked about.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion of payment of, ratifying payment of the bills? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Next item is consider all matters related to the issuance of and sale of Hood County Limited Tax Bond Series 2014, including the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of such bond and obligating the levy of ad valorem taxes to pay the bond, approving a payment agent register agreement and engagement letter of bond counsel.
Judge and Commissioners, we have some good news this morning, and Jim Sabonis of First Southwest is here to present the results of the request for financing, and Dan Culver is here to answer any questions you might have about the legal issues related to this proposed debt of $3,500,000. I'd like to introduce Jim Sabonis first to go over the results of the financing request.
Thank you, Stan. Judge, Commissioners.
Let me hand out some background information for you.
I think Stanley's already done that.
Well, I'm glad to be here. It's been a long process, but we're here to talk about the Phase 2 funding of the Nannatorium Recreation Facility. We had a remainder of $3.5 million of our authorized bonds that we competitively bid out on Thursday. I'm pleased to tell you that we received seven bids, and the low bid was by Texas Independent Bank of 2.15 percent below what we had projected and well within what we had talked about. I want to say, and I'm gonna walk you through this page by page, but part of the process is we went back from the last Commissioners' Court meeting I attended. We worked with Stan to look at where your financial position is, what your tax values are, and structured that. And I think when you look at the plan of finance, you're gonna be very pleased that through his creative, this is gonna have a minimum impact overall to the county. So in summary, we went forward with a two, we voted bonds to fund the Recreation Nannatorium Project. We discussed splitting that bond issue into two processes, take advantage of the bank-qualified rates. We had a very successful first sale. This was time to move forward with the second sale. We bid this out, and as you can see, we had a wide rider, bidders, and the bidders did exactly what we had hoped for and very competitively bid this transaction. In this packet I hand out, I'm just gonna walk through some of the key items. On the first page, we have the table, I mean, the schedule of events. This is something that really talks about a long process, starting with the analysis of funding of this facility to authorizing bonds, coming up with the two-place finance. In summary, if you approve this tonight, today, you'll actually assign some documents. Dan Culver, your bond counsel, will present them to the Attorney General. The Attorney General reviews and approves all bond issues that we have, and we anticipate having a closing on April 22nd, at which time all the funds will be in the county's control to move forward with construction. The second section I have is the term sheet that we bid out. We sent this to all the financial institutions that we know are interested and buy tax-exempt county bonds. We talked to them, received questions. Stan did a great job answering any questions they had. As a result, right behind that, you're gonna see the summary of bids that we received. We received seven bids from a variety of financial institutions, exactly as we anticipated. These are all the leading regional financial institutions. You know, the last transaction we did was a little higher power amount. We had more national interest because of that. As I told you then, I thought we'd have just a fewer bidders because some of them would drop out on the size. But I'm very pleased on this $3.5 billion size, we had seven bidders. And more importantly, we're pleased with the winning bid, and Texas Independent Bank bid 2.15 percent. Not only did they bid that at low rate, but it's callable anytime after 215 of 2015. And that gives us flexibility if we intend to do some road pass-through bonds, and we wanna kind of look at our balance sheet, if we can do a refunding, you know, if we wanna change how we work with the Recreation Center. So not only is it a low rate, but it gives us flexibility if we choose to call, restructure, or to do anything with it that we want. Behind that is actually the bid form that was submitted from Texas Independent Bank, 2.15 percent, based on the principal miles that we talked about. We actually structured the principal miles a little bit different. We still have a nine-year amortization, but to kind of buffer the impact to the taxpayers, as you can see on the bid form, the years 2016 and 2017, we kind of adjusted the payments to help smooth out the schedule. And if you look at that, it doesn't make sense. But when you look at your overall debt picture, and I want you to look at what we have here titled, it's a spreadsheet that is in landscape format, called the Hood County 2013-2014 Plan of Finance. What you're gonna see in these columns are our existing values that we have on taxable value, using very conservative 0 percent interest, 0 percent tax value growth. We just assume that we stay flat. We have all our existing obligations. And then we detail the funding that we've done for the Recreation Center, both in Phase 1 and Phase 2. And as you can see in column I, we have our new net general obligation debt. And what we've done is been able to keep that very flat. You can see as you move forward to next year in 2015, 14, you're gonna pay about the same amount of debt service within a rounding. Now, it shows a very small impact, less than 2 tenths of a penny, but the reality is we try to keep it pretty low, and so the impact would not be anymore. And so by doing that adjustment slightly in those first two maturities, allowed us to take advantage of the low amount of debt you have outstanding, the rapid amortization, and minimize the impact, and in fact, maybe offset any impact. So my thought is that going forward for the next budget year, you're in an excellent position with little impact from this debt service. And then behind this, we've actually got the numbers for the transaction that will actually be presented to Attorney General and approved, and the amortization payment schedule that if you approve tonight and it's closed, will be done. So in summary, it's the last phase, and it completes the funding of the Nannatorium. It's good to see a project from beginning initiation come to a process where you plan how to fund it. And we're very pleased, and we think the plan worked exactly as hoped, and embedded a very low cost for this, for you. I want to congratulate and thank you for allowing us to be part of this, and especially give our personal thanks to Stan, who you're very fortunate to be your administrator here. He's a great contact, tremendous assistance in doing the process. You know, when the investors talk to him, they have tremendous respect for him and this county. So in summary, you know, I think from the day one when we came up with the two-phase plan...
Everything is taken by exactly...
...as we had talked about or exceeded it. Ultimately, that means that there's lower costs to the citizens of this county. As your financial advisor, we recommend approval. We're very pleased presented to you, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Does any, any Commissioner have any questions for Jim?
The only question I have, Jim, is when you read the fine line, we talk about, you know, this last phase we're borrowing of the $3.5 million. It may be a Dan question more than it is your question, but when you read the fine lines of all the financial contracts, it says we're supposed to use some of this money, a percentage of this money, within X amount of time. This last portion will not be used till 2015. Is that a problem, Dan?
We went through that pretty detailed when we did our failed tax diligence a couple weeks ago with Stan, and we, I talked to even with the YMCA to make sure they understood the timing, talked to your purchasing agent. You basically have to spend the money within three years, but you have to spend, commit 5 percent of the proceeds in the first six months. And I think y'all have already spent, you know, pretty much that on the first year because you bought the land and some things of that nature, cost of issuance.
On the 6.5.
That's right. And then you've got your construction agreements, your contract manager at risk, all that's supposed to be coming here in the next few months, and that's gonna obligate you to expend at least 5 percent of these proceeds.
Okay, so we'll just go out, we'll just go back and forth in both funds, is what Stan will do when he sets it up?
That's right.
So the architect phase and all of that, part of that, okay?
Yes.
I'm just making sure that we follow the legality of the rules.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioners, let me, I'm gonna make a statement. I'm gonna ask your bond counsel to confirm this. Three years is the guidelines that we have that we're not gonna be subject to arbitrage, which arbitrage means if we could make more money investing it than we do by issuing it, we just rebate back to government. They don't want us to make money. Now, there are processes where if you go beyond three years, that we just have to report that we've gone beyond three years and show them if we have any excess earnings. The law's intention is so we don't fund projects and just use money to do investments, but there are a number of situations that allow us to actually go beyond the three years. We just have to report, file the appropriate reports, and with the IRS from our perspective.
Yeah, that's right. But I guess, I think my understanding is this facility is planned to be open November 2005, so the three years is really not an issue. The issue we've focused on mostly is the 5 percent in the first six months because they're in this process, but I think we're comfortable that we met that or will meet that requirement.
That's fine.
All right.
All right, so I think, does anybody else have any questions for either Dan or Jim? Then I believe the only thing to consider is to move to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of the sale of the Hood County Tax Limited Series 2014 and approve all the matters. So have a motion to approve that order?
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us speak here. We're very proud, and we're thankful to represent you. I can't, I look forward to coming to the grand opening and actually seeing this wonderful facility benefit the community.
Can you, I know for everybody's sake, we kind of went through this, and we kind of locked these amounts in right now because interest rates are, I think, are going up. Are you seeing that, you or Dan?
Well, it's hard to have 100 percent accuracy, but the general belief is, and I think that we have our new Fed Reserve Commissioner that have already indicated, made clear indication to the, to the investment community that they're actually kind of reducing their open-market purchases. You know, we think that we see a slow upward movement in interest rates. It's their goal to actually move that process forward without disturbing the financial market. So when we had our plan to issue the debt, you had an approved project, you wanted to move forward, you know, some of the things that we talked about with your staff and presented to you as the Commissioners is that we were in the lowest interest rate in history. You wanted to embed that, so you'd pay that over the nine years. Secondly, that we split the issue, so we had bank qualified to make sure we had the lowest interest rates at those times. And uniquely, along the lines, we actually sold our first issue probably at the very lowest interest rates in history. This is actually slid up slightly, as you see that slow slide upwards. So for the benefit of the public, you know, our goal would be to fund this, to keep low interest rates embedded now, and to reduce interest rate risk from the project, and to realize that when you do contracts, it's a delicate situation because county has to have funds to enter into contracts if they can pay them, but then there's a time issue, how quickly, when to get started. And, you know, we believe that this plan of finance is the best way to low-cost fund this project over time. We're pleased to have this done and move forward in that. But yeah, I think, again, Judge, Commissioners, we believe that in general, and this transaction rates are starting to slide upwards just a little bit, slowly but surely.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Lanias, consider and take appropriate action to approve the payment in lieu of taxes for the waiver for the Granbury Housing Authority, Commissioner, Precinct 4.
Judge and Commissioners, Nelda Robertson is the supervisor or that handles the housing authority, which is in my precinct, majority of the housing is. I don't believe Nelda's here this morning, but she's had an issue with a knee injury or something, but she's asked that, we do this every year, we've done it since I've been on court, but because it is Granbury Housing Authority and it's a governmental agency, I believe I send all that paperwork to your office, and Mary, it just needs a signature that because it is a governmental housing, that in lieu of taxes, we waive the taxes for the ad valorem values of that.
I'll entertain a motion to allow the county judge to sign this waiver.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the establishment of a sponsorship program for donations to the construction of the new animal control building and a separate account for the major donations directed to the new facility. Sheriff?
Judge, Commissioners, Sergeant Kelly'd like to talk to you.
Good morning. Today I'd like to discuss the sponsorship program for the new Hood County Animal Control Facility. The sheriff's gonna be handing out the program that I'm proposing at this time.
Let Lynn do the talking.
No.
Okay. You can sponsor the Hood County Animal Control with the Diamond Level, the Platinum Level, the Gold Level, the Silver Level, and the Bronze Level. I'd like to start receiving donations as soon as possible. So we would like that account set up to where when we do receive donations, the donations are put into that account. are put into that account line, and that will go towards the new facility.
What is the name of the account that you want on the checks?
It would be to the Hood County Animal Control, but we would monitor any of the, if they were a diamond, platinum, gold, silver, or bronze, then it would go into this new account, and the new account is directed to the new facility. We'll still receive donations, general donations for the facility we're in now, that we do, we receive donations monthly for general items. These items would go directly to the new facility.
Probably that count's going to have to have a Hood County Construction or Animal Control's construction on it. That way...
Especially earmarked for that.
Yeah, especially earmarked.
You're running this all through the Treasurer's Department, right?
Yes.
Stan and Kathy are making, I mean, I know when we had our last animal control meeting, he, he said that was possible as long as she and he both came up and they know about it and they get it coded right, I believe, for the right account. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
You comfortable with this?
That's what we're just talking about. The general ledger opposed to bank the account.
Stanley?
Well, there's no trouble to keep on putting it on the books.
We have to accept at each court like a donation, though, correct?
Yes.
I mean, that would be the smart thing to do. It's just like we did for the employee benefit, for the employee health fare last week, they need to put on every, any agenda item so that we have a minute paper trail of it before it goes into that account as well. Don't you agree?
And what we were hoping was for security, it'd be better to put it into a separate bank account, and I think that's a question the Treasurer should look into and make sure that's permitted.
Okay. You give that, Treasurer?
And I'd also...
I agree with that, it needs to be in a special earmarked account.
I'd also like to have PayPal linked to our Pet Finder account, our website, as well as our Facebook account, so people can have the opportunity, if they're working during the day and they'd like to make a donation, to have it linked, and it would go directly into that account. And it would only be for those special items.
I would suggest that's an item that needs to go through the IT Department, that you get into security, and, you know, once you start opening up our internet website to financial transactions, I wouldn't want to speak for Jackie. It may be possible, it may be fine, but let's, let's not put him into a situation without letting him have a chance to review the controls over there.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve this sponsorship program, depending on the, working out of the details with the IT Department, Treasurer, and Auditor.
These are your five levels you're wanting to go after?
Yes, they are, and I also wanted to let y'all know that Family Graphics here in Hood County approached me yesterday, actually went to them last week, and they called me yesterday, and they would like to sponsor Hood County Animal Control in donating all of the plaques and engraving of the plaques for free.
Excellent. Very good. On this brick pavers, we discussed this the other day, what's your plan number for them, and how you going to proceed on getting them in there, and then maybe years later we have room for more?
Sure. Tim Wallace with McGee Architect said that there was room for seven hundred bricks. I can say that we will be selling all seven hundred bricks, it may not be in the first month, the third month, but it's going to be ongoing. What I'd like to do is sand in the bricks, once they're engraved, don't cement them in, sand them in, then I'll have blank bricks to where when I sell them, we can remove that brick and put an engraved brick in. So, it won't look like a project that's half-done. You'll have all seven hundred bricks in there, and it will just be an ongoing donation.
Once, once they're all there, we permanently put them in there?
Yes. And then also on these donations, it's a, it's not an annual where you have to pay a thousand dollars every year to keep your name above that kennel. It's a one-time fee, and it's forever. It's the lifetime of that kennel.
Okay, how many gold kennels, gold levels are you going to sell?
The dog kennels, we can sell up to...
Eighty-one.
Eighty, it's eighty-one dogs and forty-two cats, so I can sell a total of a hundred-and-twenty-three.
Okay.
Gold and silver. Brick pavers, seven hundred. Platinum levels, it's, sky's the limit, as well as diamond.
Okay. Okay. Entertain that motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Berry to approve a sponsorship program, depending on the details being worked out with the Treasurer and Auditor and the IT Department. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Thank y'all very much. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the request from the Treasurer to promote an employee to Assistant Treasurer, CS seven, step six. Treasurer?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. As you all probably have heard or know by now, I lost my Assistant Treasurer last week to retirement. The good news is I have someone who can step right in and fill her, in her shoes. Steve Pittman is my, I would like for him to be my new Assistant Treasurer. He comes with a Bachelor of Science in, his major is in accounting. He is, he is a certified accountant. He's also a former auditor with Patillo, Brown, and Hill, who are now our, our current auditors for the county. So, he comes with dual asset in my office. What I would like to do, last October, the court reevaluated a handful of the positions in the county that were assistants to different elected officials. Those assistants being that they had to act in the absence of that official. We did that with the previous Assistant Treasurer, and I would simply like to move this individual into that slot that she left.
Anyone have any questions of the Treasurer?
CS level's the same, is that what you're telling us? Just a step is what you're trying to do?
It would be. It would be CS seven, step six.
Is that where your assistant was with CS seven?
She was a seven, so I would like to start him at a six.
So, you're just doing, you're just following the protocol and moving somebody with experience to that spot?
To her slot.
But the CS level didn't change. Your assistant, your assistant that left was already a CS seven, is all I'm asking.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried.
And Judge, as a side note, at your convenience, I need to get him sworn in.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can do that. Thank you, Kathy. Discuss and take appropriate action on the request for the Hood County employees to pave the parking lot at Mission Granbury Office. Mission Granbury will purchase and provide the materials.
Judge, I'd like to table this motion. I had requested an opinion from the county attorney, and she is busy preparing for a trial, and she was unable to provide an opinion. So, I would like to table this until we, we are able to get an opinion from Ms. Caspar.
Okay, have a motion made by Commissioner Taut to table this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever to, any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. All right, I believe that was the end of the agenda, so we are now adjourned. It is nine forty.